A little brief intro like I've done in the past. Just want to welcome everybody to our June 23, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. I want everyone in the public and present at the meeting to know that we are broadcasting this live on local channel 27, as well as on Pacific Coast TV's website. You're able to still submit comments via my email bejet@hmbcity.com. During the, up until the public comment or comment period of that specific item, we will read any correspondence that comes in into the record. We may or may not have lots of community members in attendance. Just want to let you know that we will take a public comment and give everyone a three minute time to speak. There will be a timer that will now post up there, so everyone will know the time it takes. And I think that is pretty much it, so I will pass it over to Chair Benjamin.
Wow, we have timers now. That's very high tech. So with that, I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting and call it to order. This is our meeting of June the 23rd. I'd like to begin if everyone could join me by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Read your flag.
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
Public for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
That is clearly the most entertaining part of the meeting. We have a roll call, please Bridget.
Yes, Commissioner Polgar.
Here.
Commissioner Riddick.
Here.
Sorry, Commissioner Hernandez.
I am present.
Commissioner Holt is absent this evening, and Chair Benjamin.
I'm right here, so thanks. With that, I'd like to jump right into our agenda. The first item of which is the consideration of the approval of minutes of the May 26 meeting. Colleagues, are there any additions or corrections?
Commissioner Riddick had one correction. It said, in a, was it, was it, I can't, sorry, I didn't have it in front of me. I apologize. It was just a spelling.
Yeah, that's a very small typo. The second, the second
point.
Question about 2,800, so he say, was, there was, it was said that the, some aspect of the drainage was inadequate, two words, and it was obviously
One word.
Was inadequate, one word.
So we'll make that correction and I'll submit it over to Jimmy.
Probably the smallest, smallest of corrections.
With that, if there are no others, may I have a motion to approve the minutes with that modification?
I'll move the way of them.
I second. Seconded by Commissioner Hernandez under the bell. All in favor signify by saying aye, or showing hand for both.
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous. There's Rick, so four zero. The next item on our agenda is the public comment period. This is the time where a member of the public who's interested in speaking to us on any item that is not on our agenda is welcome to do so. So I'm going to open the public comment period and ask whether, Bridget, we have any people who'd like to speak on this.
I am looking at public comment and see no one raising their hand, so.
All right, very good. In that case, I will close the public comment and move on to the next section of our meeting, which is the public hearing section. The first of which is the consideration by the commission of a temporary use permit. And I will give that over to Scott for the presentation.
Thank you Chair Benjamin and members of the planning mission. This is really, what we're asking the planning commission to do is to acknowledge the decision of the director for the temporary use of installation of a temporary tent and some events out at the Ocean Colony Partners golf course area. And this is an item that's been presented to the planning commission for several years now. And the folks at Ocean Colony Partners are looking to pretty much do the same thing that they've done the past few years, with the exception of the, you know, obvious social distancing that will need to take place during their events in compliance with the county orders, whatever may be in place at the time of the events. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. There's, it's essentially the same as what's taken place in the past years, so.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, do you have any questions or comments about this item?
I just had one question. It's not, I have nothing substantive or anything. I just was wondering if the, is it the, who staffs the events?
So it's the, the, the folks that own the Mullins and operate the golf course. That it's, it's there, several charitable events that they've put on in. They've done this for many years now. You know, for, you know, within the letter in the staff report, it goes into detail on, you know, the series of charitable events that they, they put on. And especially for the dining and such, they, they need more space than what their current restaurant allows for. And so they install a temporary, temporary tent to allow for the, you know, mostly the, you know, the eating and that takes place during these events. So.
It's also their businesses that are staffing.
Within a planned unit development, our code requires the issuance of a temporary use permit. And the planning commission has to acknowledge the decision of the director. And then the director's decision could be appealed to the planning commission. But we haven't received any, any real concerns from the community on this, so.
Jill, did you have something to add?
Just remind everyone, and if there are more questions, the applicant is present.
Thank you. Did the applicant wish to speak on this item?
Hi, hi, good evening. No, I think that Scott pretty much answered all the questions that we had. We, of course, will follow any CDC county city guidelines that are in place at the time. We really are not sure what these events will look like, but of course, we want to have the option to host them, given that the majority of the charitable organizations here are, you know, are for first responders. There's Cal Fire, Navy SEAL, Norman S. Wright, St. Mary's Hospital. So these are some really good charitable organizations. And in whatever capacity we are able to host these events this year, we're hopeful to do that. So I do see there's a condition in here, which Scott and I spoke about, or corresponded about, I should say, regarding, you know, COVID and, and current regulations that are in place at the time, and we will, of course, adhere to that.
Thank you very much. My only additional comment is beyond whatever those are, especially considering the, the people who will be attending the event, copious amounts of hand sanitizer available at the ready, wherever you are at that event. And easy to get on, in case you left yours, and generous sanitation at the restrooms. Those are my, my concerns, but other than that, I, I think it's great. Does anybody want to do anything besides acknowledge the decision of the planning director?
I just had to, a question and a comment. So the first question, if I may through the chair. We're not constraining the permit so that it has to be for these, you know, charitable events. The, the applicant can use this space however they see fit during the 90 day period that's been approved. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, and it's, the, the permit allows for the installation of the, the temporary structures, the tent. Then there is a small ancillary tent that would be installed, as well as the, the flagpoles on the golf course itself. And then the, the use of that, it's, you know, whether it's the Navy SEALs or Cal Fire, you know, the, the permit wouldn't constrain what charitable organization or, you know, what would necessarily take place, as long as the intensity of the use isn't beyond what is included in the permit.
So where I was going with this was, this could be used for non-charitable purposes. It could be for commercial purposes, which by the way, given the situation we're in, I totally encourage the property, the applicant, to use this however they see fit to make their business more sustainable. So, and if, you know, my, as, as a commissioner, if the applicant wishes to ask for more flexibility for outdoor dining, or if there's anything else they need to do, I want to express the position, my position, I don't speak on behalf of the entire commission, but that, hey, we're here to help, we're here to help the applicant do what they need to do to support their business, to make a safe dining area for the people who would use their property. And, you know, we're very supportive of the contributions the applicant makes to the city of Half Moon Bay. So very, very comfortable with them using this flexibly as they need to. Generally speaking, we get this, so that's my, the question was answered. I had some comment on that, and then the second point I just wanted to make was, why do we need to review this every year? Because this, this does seem to come to us every year on this issue. Is there a way for us to, you know, avoid the applicant having to come to us every year for this? Or is it just, hey, that's just where we're at, and the easiest way administratively for us to deal with it is to look at it every year?
It is a provision that's within our zoning code currently, so it would require a zoning amendment in order to remove it. And currently, right now, it's very, very specific that the planning commission has to acknowledge the decision of the director to allow for temporary uses in a planned unit development, so.
Okay, great. Well, I'm happy to acknowledge and pass it back to Jimmy. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Yes, Steve.
I just wanted to say real quick that I think we're, we're all impressed with the good job that Ocean Colony Partners have done with such events in the past, and I'm, I'm heartened that they're bravely going forward, trying to find a way to, to do this in some form this year. And be, it'll be welcome in Half Moon Bay, especially in this year when there will be no pumpkin festival for our, for the support of the local nonprofits that we've been used to.
I see. Any other comments? I just wanted to ask you, Scott, if you could remind me, every now and then in these matters, we get some concerns from the public about parking in the fire lane. Can you just remind me what their arrangement is?
So currently, they have the parking lot that said Mullins. And, you know, I, I know, at least in the last couple of years, we haven't received any complaints about that. I know in the pen, many years ago, we did receive some concerns about the actual tent building, you know, with view blockage, but to my knowledge, they're going to be using the existing parking lot there at Mullins, so.
Okay. That, that, in that case, I have no other concerns. I'd be disappointed if we had a, an emergency and crews were not able to get there rapidly. But it sounds like that's been the sort of as well. So with that, we'll move on to our next item and thank the applicant for joining us. And thank you, Scott, for the presentation.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is also a public area. This concerns consideration by the commission of a vegetative maintenance permit for Pacific Gas and Electric. And that will be presented by Doug, so welcome Doug.
Good evening, commissioners. Give me a moment to get my PowerPoint up. I'd also point out that Representative from PG&E, Vic Germany, is logged in. I think she's muted. I don't know if Bridget needs to do anything to.
I can unmute her once we're at that point.
Okay.
On the presentation, or after.
Thank you. I'm going to mute myself just so that it's easier to hear what everyone has to say.
So for the record, I'm Doug Garrison, Senior Planner, City of Half Moon Bay. And this project, a couple of preliminary sort of housekeeping matters. It's a little bit unusual in that the planning commission will not be able to make a final decision tonight. And I'll take the blame for that due to sort of a series of inefficiencies from shelter in place, trying to get the SEQUA document uploaded to the state clearinghouse. It took longer than anticipated, and some of us also sort of forgot there were such things as holidays, like Memorial Day. But we, we did have to get the notice into the Half Moon Bay review before we would find out from the clearinghouse when the official 30 day comment period started. And as it turns out, that comment period won't end until the 25th of June. And so that's why planning commission won't be able to make the final decision tonight. What we intend is to give a presentation about the project, the applicants here to perhaps give a short presentation and answer questions from the commission, accept any comments from the public. And then we'd ask that the planning commission continue the remainder of the hearing, the decision to the July 14th meeting. And if we receive additional comments, we will, of course, write up responses and present all that to you on the 14th. The project location is a narrow band of land. It's along Highway 92. It's on the south side of the highway. It begins just east of the Hilltop Mobile Home Park, runs along the post property, which is also the location of the city's maintenance yard. Would affect primarily that row of planted Monterey Cypress trees. They're, they were put in as part of some Highway 92 project as regularly spaced trees as a landscaping feature. There's a total of 11 trees. They're going to be removed from there, and then it jumps over the Spanish Town Shops and the firewood business and begins up just east of there. And extends up to essentially the city boundary to the northeast. And so these yellow and green dots, those are trees that are targeted for removal. The green ones would be designated as heritage trees per our zoning code definition. These are a little bit hard to pick out, but these black rectangles, there are two of them. Those are staging areas. I've got a little bit better photos coming up. This one's on a graded level area in the maintenance yard. It's used for equipment, vehicle, construction material storage by the city. The other one is up here. It's accessible by the only road into that area. And the bulk of the trees are in this very dense eucalyptus woodland along here. Presents a couple of complications. Highway 92 is, crosses a pretty steep hillside there. It's very narrow. There really aren't any shoulders that would allow equipment parking or workers. So that's one of the considerations we had to work our way through. The, the purpose of the project is to make it clear it's for safety. There's no plan to construct anything new. It's not an expansion of the existing gas pipeline, doesn't extend it into any new areas. There's no grading involved, anything like that. It's the reason why this has been undertaken. There's, it's a component. This project would be a component of the PG&E Community Pipeline Safety Initiative. And the purpose is to improve access to the pipeline for inspections, testing, emergency repairs. If anybody's been into that eucalyptus grove, it's very densely overgrown with poison oak, Cape ivy, Himalayan blackberry, as well as some very large eucalyptus trees. And also, it's been determined that tree roots, large woody brush roots can have a detrimental effect on pipeline integrity. And so it's, it's just something that really has to be done. And there's a, a long laundry list of state and federal regulations that compel this work by PG&E. Those are cited in the staff report, as well as the initial study. There's a very detailed project description in the initial study, as well as the staff report, just the key-ish points here. It's a total of 79 trees that will be removed, 115 brush units, which, brush units, equivalent of 540 square feet. I would note that the brush removal entails basically cutting it down. They're, they're required to leave a minimum of six inches above ground in place. With the tree removal, the stump and all the roots will be left in place also to help stabilize the ground. So the southwest work area, down by the post property, it's a total of 11 trees. Up in the eucalyptus grove in the northeast work area, it's a total of 68 trees. And I would point out, the original proposal included a total of 90, I think a little over 90 trees. And I would point out, the original proposal included a total of 90, I think a little over 90 trees. Through additional review, PG&E was able to scale that back to the current 79 trees. That helps in avoiding some more environmentally sensitive areas, riparian area along Pillar Cidos Creek, for example. PG&E has also proposed to replace all trees that are over 12 inches in diameter on a one-for-one basis. There's sort of two perspectives on this from the city's heritage tree ordinance. We would not require replacement of eucalyptus trees, just the Cypress trees. Under coastal commission direction, there are sometimes requirements for more than one-to-one. And that's based on the habitat value of the affected area. It can be four, five, six, 71 if it's a wetland or riparian area. In this case, we've accepted the proposal of 35 replacement trees. Planning Commission is welcome to weigh in on their thoughts on that. The brush removal is primarily in the eucalyptus and as I mentioned, there's a lot of non-natives. There's Cape Ivy, Himalayan Blackberry, permanent poison oak from my experience in there. They are proposing potentially up to two nights of nighttime work. That would require perhaps a partial closure of Highway 92 on the eastbound lane. And I'd point out, one of the reasons why they're proposing this is that it there are a couple of areas that are very difficult to access without affecting environmentally sensitive areas from the inland side. And so doing the work from the road allows them to, you know, use a bucket truck, a crane, cut the trees down, haul them out without going through more sensitive areas. So there, there is a good reason for that. And then after this initial stage, there would be a long-term maintenance, which would be every one to three years where PG&E would come in and cut down young eucalyptus saplings, trim some of the brush as necessary to maintain the access there. From a regulatory process standpoint, this is part of sort of a larger project. It extends up through the county along Highway 92 up to, I think, almost Highway 280. The county approved a coastal development permit for their portion of it and the work was completed in 2019. Separate coastal development permit for the part that's in the city. And so the first step in this for our, once we determined that a coastal development permit was required. And I would note, these kinds of maintenance projects are very often exempt from that requirement. Guidance from the coastal commission is that if you're cutting down trees over 12-inch diameter or over 500 square feet of brush, then requires a coastal development permit. So that's why in this case, both the city and the county required that. Other areas outside the coastal zone, some of these projects could be exempt from permits and/or from SEQUA. We did require biological report. PG&E submitted that. We sent it to an independent firm, SWCA, to perform a peer review. Based on their review, revisions to the biological report were made. It was then circulated for 45 days to outside agencies as required. And then SWCA also prepared the SEQUA document, an initial study mitigated negative declaration. This project's a little bit unusual that there are two different tracks. There's a SEQUA track and a NEPA track. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service prepared a NEPA evaluation for a larger regional nine-county project, which includes this one. And Fish and Wildlife Service prepared an environmental assessment, which is roughly the NEPA equivalent of an initial study. Their findings were Fonzie finding of no significant impact, roughly the equivalent of a mitigated negative declaration. And then they also approved an incidental take permit for the entire nine-county area in the event that there were accidental takings of protected species. Part of that was a PG&E operations and maintenance habitat program. That's what was evaluated. There are a lot of avoidance and mitigation measures built into those documents. For the most part, if we could incorporate those into our SEQUA document, we did that. In some cases, we refined them a little bit to focus them on local conditions and concerns. And then with all of that, we'll have a PC hearing where which is where we are tonight, to evaluate all this information. Tonight, we'll get input from the planning commission, if there are any public comments, and then we will take all that under consideration and come back in July for hearing. So this is a little bit better photograph of the very western corner of the project. You can see a little bit of the Hilltop Mobile Home Park. That rectangular shape there is the old agricultural pond. Not active at this point. This Google photo is a little bit outdated. It's actually grown in, naturally revegetated with quite a bit of new growth, particularly on the banks and in the pond itself. There is chain link fence around that. You can see that's the regular rectangular shape there. The trees are being removed. A couple of these are Monterey pines that are pretty well diseased and will be taken out anyway. This is, it's an interesting area. This area was designated as a utility right away. There's a lot in there. There's you can see telecommunications boxes. There's water line in here. There's overhead lines. There's PG&E gas line. Think there may be a water main. And at some point, somebody decided it would be a good idea to plant a bunch of trees on top of it. And it looks nice. It provides a nice entrance to the city. And, but on the other hand, there are some real safety considerations as far as ongoing maintenance for all of these utilities. If you look just on the other side of the fence from where the fire hydrant is, you can see the dead Monterey pine and then there's sort of a cleared area. It's about 50 feet from the sidewalk up to the top of bank for the pond. There's a couple more. There's a chain link fence along the sidewalk, another one inside there about 20 feet in. And I think there's even a third one up by the pond. And most of the lusher vegetation is inside the chain link fences over by the pond. As you move down a little bit further west, you can see the corner of the city maintenance yard here. This is where the staging area would be is on this graded area. A little bit of the Spanish Town Shops here. The trees are going to be removed down here. It's a cluster down at the corner. There's also a sign. This pipeline's like a magnet. This, I think, is a Chamber of Commerce sign that says, among other things, welcome to the happiest town on the coast side, which is it's dead center on top of the pipeline. That's probably going to have to be moved somewhere else in the near future. When we get up to the northeast part, this is the area I was talking about where Highway 92 is quite narrow. This is all really dense eucalyptus trees in here. Here's the firewood farms business. As you come up, there's this farmhouse here. This is the only way in. There's an existing unpaid road that comes in, works its way down here. And you can just barely see there's a little bit of a clearing in here that at some point was cleared out for unknown reasons. And that's where we're proposing the staging area here. It's the only way to get in there without causing more damage. So it's wasn't a random decision. It's really the only feasible location and minimizes damage to the greatest extent. This is a tree that's staying. This is the ones I was discussing that originally was proposed for removal. One thing PG&E did was they marked the entire length of the pipeline. It has the little pin flags in the ground. All the trees that were proposed for removal are marked with the orange flagging. I've walked the entire length of this a couple of times now. This tree is actually right on the bank or sort of hanging over Pillar Cidos Creek. And this and a few other trees that were down in that area after further review, PG&E determined they could leave those in place. So there has been some back and forth with the city and we've had some good outcomes in avoiding working in areas that would be more environmentally sensitive. So as we went through the analysis on this, there's really two big issues. There's a the initial study is comprehensive, covers a whole range of potential impacts, but it was really about aesthetics, views from Highway 92 and also the biological resources, any effects on special status wildlife or habitat for those species. From a visual standpoint, the initial study does have visual simulations. This one on top is existing conditions. This is the ag pond in the background, talked about earlier. It's sort of on a knoll. It rises up above the road level. And then down here in the lower photo, you can see with some of the trees gone, what's left is gentle hillside, the knoll that goes up to where the pond is. And this is not a dramatic change in visual quality as you're driving westward on Highway 92. As we do note in the report, with some of the proposed replacement trees, this could be an area where the city's under contract to buy this property, but hasn't gone through yet. There will be a more comprehensive plan as to what will take place on that property when the city buys it. And so one area that we could replant trees would be in here. It would not really replicate the rhythm of this straight line of trees along the highway, but it would add a little character in the background. So that would be one thing to consider. As you're looking eastward, this is existing. You can see on the after photo where these trees on the corner are removed. It opens up the view into Spanish Town Shops. That's where their sign is, the dinosaur sculptures. Doesn't really affect the view into the city's maintenance yard or some of the other more intensive uses over there. One thing you can see from this is there are some slots through the trees where you can see the city's maintenance yard and it could be that in the future, we could plant some, including the landscaping plans for the maintenance yard could be a little bit in here. But again, we can't really identify those specific locations until some date in the future when the city completes the transaction and comes up with a plan for development continued use of the site. Biological resources were a little more complex. I would point out that this is a short-term project estimated to last for up to three weeks. Does not include construction, grading, trenching, that sort of thing. So the impacts are not as great as you might consider if it was a construction project. Much of what's in the program is designed to avoid impacts. And these are incorporated into the mitigation measures in the initial study mitigated negative declaration as well as the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service NEPA documents. But the vehicles only be used on existing roads and disturbed areas. Right now, if the project gets approved this summer, PG&E could get out there and do the work early September, which is really the optimal window. It's after the nesting bird season. It's before we get into the rainy season and California red-legged frogs start moving around from pond to pond and creek. So that would be really a beneficial timing matter. Again, there's a little bit of a trade-off that there will be some effects, potentially closing the eastbound lane for a couple of short distances, two nights. But again, that allows us to avoid going into more sensitive areas and causing additional damage beyond just removing trees that could be cut down and then lifted out from the road using a bucket truck or crane and that does avoid potential impacts. Other parts of the program, there is onsite biological monitoring. As I've already mentioned, the tree replacement, 35 trees. When we went through the tree replacement, on the one hand, it exceeded what the heritage tree ordinance would require. We looked at the habitat value of the areas where the trees were coming at and it didn't seem from staff's perspective that it warranted increasing the ratio of replacement trees to the ones removed. Planning Commission or the public may have other thoughts and this is the opportunity to present those. PG&E had originally noted that they had a site to plant trees, which would be south of town on the Portera Nuevo Farm. Some people may be familiar with that. It's, that's the farm where abundant grace, the program that provides assistance for local homeless people and others. They provide labor for that farm. The farm's covered under a permanent agricultural conservation easement and eventually be passed on to post. So they do some good work. There is some ongoing restoration work. That is one option. City staff position is that to the extent we can have the replacement trees in Half Moon Bay, we'd prefer that. And there's sort of a couple of questions for the planning commission to weigh in on there. Is there a preferred location to maximize habitat value versus aesthetics from Highway 92? City does have a couple of other projects going. We will be undertaking a restoration of a different section of Pillar Cidos Creek where there used to be there was damage from homeless encampments. That might be one area. We have these a couple of bike trails going in along Highway 1 where we're going to have to mitigate for some riparian damage. So there are plenty of places for the city to use the trees in a restoration or, for that matter, in city parks or street trees. And we'd welcome any input from the planning commission as to what their priorities would be. The other avoidance is that they leave all the tree stumps in place, holds the ground in place. Same thing with the brush removal. It's cut down to no more than six inches above ground. So we're not really anticipating a lot of bare ground that could lead to erosion, water. So we're not really anticipating a lot of bare ground that could lead to erosion, water quality problems. As I touched on, the the work areas have been set up, the staging areas to avoid going into riparian and other high quality area areas. There are a number of other mitigation measures that are a little more project specific. I'm not going to go through all of those, but they're in the initial study. So we have received some comments. Coastal Commission submitted written comments to us yesterday. Staff prepared written response, sent that back to the Coastal Commission. And that, those two documents are attached to the staff report. There's attachment tree also includes some additional graphics that were provided in a tree inventory from PG&E back in the beginning that makes it a little bit clearer to see where the trees are being removed and what type they are and what size they are. We have had some input from individual planning commissioners today. Chairman Benjamin submitted some written comments. I believe Bridget distributed those to the other planning commission members. Staff has not had time to prepare a written response to that, but we welcome any discussion and comments from the whole commission. And to date, we have not received any public comments on this. So as far as remaining issues, one of the nice things about not being able to make a decision tonight is we were to, we were able to leave a couple of questions a little bit open ended. For the long term maintenance that would happen every one to three years, PG&E's proposed to use a limited use of herbicides, primarily spraying the tree stumps if saplings are growing up out of them. Not a broad use of herbicides, but limited with some going in with hand tools to thin out the brush, that sort of thing. Where we went in the initial study as well as the staff report is that from a regulatory standpoint, that's a little bit murky because of a series of court cases going back over the years. And at this point, it's not altogether clear that the EPA and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service would allow use of herbicides there based under current settlement agreements. There there are, it could be done with with hand tools. PG&E has noted they could go in with weed whackers and that sort of thing. We did get some input from one of the commissioners that there are some potential alternatives. Putting wax on some of the stumps and some others. We look forward to discussion with the commission about those options and what PG&E's thoughts are as far as effectiveness. The the other question is with the tree replacement is what's proposed appropriate? Does the planning commission think that the effects on habitat warrants higher number or not? Or is it just right? In any direction on where you think the trees ought to be planted? And then finally, there's no resolution attached to this staff report because we just wanted to wait and see what kind of comments we got from everybody. But if there are specific conditions that the commission would like to see in the resolution or some refinement to some of the language in the mitigation measures, we welcome that at this time. So that concludes my presentation and we recommend that you allow PG&E to write a few comments now if they'd like and then open it up to public and and provide staff with feedback that we can work on and get back to you for July fourteenth here.
Okay, thank you very much, Doug. Unless there's objection from the commission, shall we invite the applicant's representative to take a few moments to add their thoughts before we seek clarifying questions? Or did you want to put some clarifying questions up on the board for them to focus on? Not hearing any. So in that case, let me invite the representative from PG&E to take the floor if they would like to share some thoughts before we begin considering clarifying questions. Bridget, you're on mute.
Of course I am. Vic, you're you're on and you can speak. Just unmute yourself. You should be able to.
Thank you. Welcome.
Oh, is it working?
Hopefully, everybody can hear me. Sorry about that. It's my microphone on my laptop. I don't know if you have Chris Patchen.
I'm actually just allowing him. He can, he's on tune. He can speak currently as well.
Yep, I'm here, Vic.
Oh, I just lost her. She muted. She's muted again. I don't know. I tried to unmute her. Let's see. There you go. You're on again. Okay, so you're both, your both microphones are on currently, Chris and Vic.
All right, thank you. So I want to thank Doug for that. Are you guys hearing the feedback too, or is it just me?
I'm afraid it's just you.
Okay, good. So I'll try and ignore it. So I want to thank, thank Doug for that excellent presentation. He went through the project pretty much in depth. And just want to reiterate what Doug said at the very beginning about how this is a safety project. The community pipeline safety initiative has been going on for a little over seven years now. PG&E has looked at our right of ways and removing vegetation and structures that could encumber that right of way. It could affect our ability to maintain our pipeline. That could affect the integrity of the pipeline and our access to the pipeline. So that's the kind of the project behind the community pipeline safety initiative. We have worked in over two hundred communities throughout the state, including other communities within the coastal commission coastal zone. Doug mentioned San Mateo County. We had several projects in San Mateo County coastal zone in which we received a CDP. And we finished that work last year. We also did work in the city of Santa Cruz coastal zone and up in Humboldt County area coastal zone. And we worked with the California Coastal Commission on those projects. So many of the measures that you have seen in the ISM and D and the description of the project have has been spread, has been has been vetted very much through very many communities and gone through like the coastal commission's review, gone through other cities and counties, coastal zone reviews as well. So those measures are all ones that we've been implementing for over seven years. And with with that, I'd just like to maybe open it up to any questions you might have on the ISM and D that maybe Chris or I can respond to.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I'd like to begin by asking you to share any clarifying questions as opposed to making judgments, who would like to be recognized. Steve, you look like you're chomping at the bit.
Well, yeah, no, nearly, but I do. I do have a couple of clarifying questions. Doug, I I think I know the answer to this, but you you said there are seventy, a total of seventy nine trees to be removed, thirty five replacement trees. I assume that's because thirty five is exactly the number of trees over twelve inches in diameter.
Correct.
Okay. And the, one of the areas you mentioned as potential site for planting replacement trees, you said is near Pillar Cetus Creek where there had been damage from camps. Is that the area next to Safeway?
Mostly, yes.
Okay, thank you for that. That's all I wanted to know.
Thank you. So Sarah, did you have any clarifying questions?
Actually, they may be your clarifying questions because reviewing Chair Benjamin, your your comment letter, there were a lot of questions in there. And so I'd be interested in hearing staff getting, having, giving staff an opportunity to respond to those. But I don't have any additional at this point, and maybe some more will come up later. But that was something I was interested in hearing.
That's very kind of you, Commissioner Pogar. I'll get to it. Commissioner Hernandez, I don't see you, so I don't know if you're raising your hand. What, any, any clarifying questions?
I don't have any clarifying questions. I have some commentary that I'll save for our discussion.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'd like to ask some clarifying questions then. So outside of some of the questions, some of my comments in the note were probably not clarifying questions and I'll just alight over them for now. But based on the presentation, it did give me pause to ask a couple of other questions that I hadn't included. And the first one was, I, you know, this is a safety project. Is there anything in our LCP that says safety projects don't have to comply with the conditions of the LCP? I think it's rhetorical, but I just want to check.
I would have to get back to you unless Jill has something on the
You know, if it's an emergency, there are qualifications for how emergencies goes, but this isn't an emergency. It's a safety.
There, there is language about utilities and maintenance and that sort of thing. But I, without reading through the the policies, I I don't have a good answer for you at the moment.
Okay. Yeah, the reason I ask is that a lot of my questions are predicated on the idea that this project actually has, even though it's a safety project, it has to conform with the policies of the local coastal program and the zoning ordinance. And my sense is that's where you're going, but I just thought I ought to, I ought to check. I didn't want to bark up the wrong tree here. So with that in mind, I would like to understand whether the let's see where to start. Let me start by asking about the habitat impacts and the policies that were cited in the ISM and D. Because it looks to me like we're staying out of the riparian area, but we're in habitat for special status species. And as I read the local coastal program and the zoning ordinance, there's not a distinction made between high quality habitat and habitat. That is, the the text of our policies is about habitats supporting or containing. And what I interpret is whether it's high quality habitat for these species or something different that we didn't specify. We're talking about habitat that is supporting or containing. Is that correct?
Well, there are distinctions made specifically for riparian vegetation, wetlands. They are stated to be high value. There's a little bit broader category where we get into trees that could be nesting.
My question a little bit, Doug. So there are policies that say we're going to protect as issues the things that you mentioned like wetlands and riparian corridors, and they have buffer zones. I get that. But we also have these things that are habitats of supporting or containing special status species. That is rare and endangered or unique species. And I just, the staff report, even in the slide sections, made a made a reference to high quality versus not high quality. And my sense is that that's subjective, that that doesn't have any relevance to our consideration of the habitat within the framework of is there an impact or is there not? Am I missing something there?
Well, I I would say in the initial study, there are for special status species, there is a statement as to for each one, the quality of the habitat for that protected species ranging from high down to low. And so it's not entirely qualitative. There is some science behind it. And I think the other sort of overriding factor here is we're not building a new pipeline. If if that were the case, I think we would be looking at this very differently. In this case, it's an existing facility that's been there for many years. And the emphasis has been on reducing, minimizing the potential impacts that could occur from maintenance. That's where I would make the distinction.
Yeah, I I'm not sure I understand exactly how that. I I think I understand what you're saying about the project being maintenance of an existing use. But I'm I'm still unclear on where in our local coastal program and our zoning ordinance, we talk about high quality habitat versus habitat. I don't think, let me say, I don't think there is a spot like that. But I do understand the distinction that you're making. Where the the staff report proposes the trees maybe be in a location that's not in the watershed. My impression is that in general, when we do mitigations for impacts, it's desirable for it to be close to the location that's involved. And I I want to be sure I'm not speaking out of turn and that I'm not missing a point. Did we have any obligation to any particular location out of, in that location where that very good farm work is taking place?
I think it's open to discussion. PG&E had a relationship with the farm and suggested that. It came up because some of the property owners did not want trees replanted on their property, in particular down in the eucalyptus area. And our thoughts were that's a pretty good location, but there might be other good options within the city, closer to Pillar Cetus Creek, maybe on the post property. But again, the city doesn't control that property right now. And I think that's probably our preference is to just find good use for it there when and if the sale goes through.
I see. With respect to the proposal of the project to manage noise impacts, I appreciated the concern, you know, there was a good listing of the different sensitive receptors in the area. Do we think that any of these are, have we quantified the kind of noise impacts that would be involved in this project?
As far as Patrick from SWCA.
Can you move closer to the microphone?
From SWCA may have some input on that. As I recall, it was a little more qualitative that it was the tools are being used would be the equivalent of a small construction project. There's no pile driving. There's no very intensive uses. It would be, you know, somebody's putting a roof on their house next door to you maybe for a short duration. The area down by the the mobile home park is is sort of the closest to sensitive receptors. Unfortunately, that's where the fewest trees are for removal. PG&E should be able to get in and out of there, I think in one day. So it's a short duration impact. But sure, you know, chainsaws make noise. I don't think there's any way around it.
My goal here is just to, you know, if we have an upper bound of impacts that says it's less than a certain amount, that's helpful to understand whether there's a a potential impact. Not knowing the number makes it a little harder for us. Not having enough of that makes it hard to go beyond a subjective assessment. So this area has been identified as returning to habitat issues as supporting or containing the cali- or containing the California red-legged frog and the San Francisco garter snake. And we are removing, the plan is to remove understory vegetation. And in your staff, in your report tonight, as well as in our conversations prior to the meeting, we had this interesting dichotomy about whether the trimming is to be to a maximum of six inches of remaining growth or a minimum of six inches of remaining growth. Because as I read the text in the, in the proposed condition, what I thought it said was that PG&E was going to be sure that it was no more than six inches of vegetation left. And if the clarification is that what they're saying is they'll trim it to maintain at least six inches, but there could be more, that's a different assessment of impact. Do you have clarity on that?
I think we could let PG&E answer that question directly to take out any speculation.
Thank you. With the barring objection from the commission, may I pose that question for clarification to PG&E?
They just need to unmute themselves and they can speak.
Yeah, this is Chris Patch from Veg Management. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Chris.
Yep, no worries. Um, yeah, I mean, if, if the agreement is to leave a little bit of ground cover, we can certainly do our best to keep that around six inches, especially if there is sensitivities to some species under there. You know, in the best case scenario, we'd like to get that as close to the ground as we can with the idea that that ivy and that poison oak and that blackberry is going to come back, you know, a few months after we leave. And then, you know, that's, that's some ongoing maintenance issues that we're going to have to deal with. But, you know, we're, as far as access and that kind of stuff, the six inches above ground for that sort of brush and that material, I wouldn't feel comfortable leaving that if we needed to. So if that's what you prefer, I think we can handle that.
Chris, I'm certainly not asking for a concession about that. I just wanted to get clarification. So your, your goal would be to get that as close to the ground as you could, really?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, thank you. And let's see, as I understand it from the staff report, it presents a finding from the Fish and Wildlife Service of no impact. And I gather that's conditioned on the fact that there is an approved habitat conservation plan in place in the five counties for a number of special statutes, including the California red-legged frog and the San Francisco garter snake. Is that correct, Doug?
Well, technically, it's a finding of no significant impact, which is a little bit different. And that's based on incorporation of all the avoidance and mitigation measures in their program and in that habitat plan. That's how they made that finding.
Okay, so the Habitat Conservation Plan, understanding that is material to understanding, you know, what kind of mitigations are in place. And I, I plowed through that this afternoon. It's about 500 pages. And
We, we thought about attaching it to the staff report and then thought better of it.
Yeah, I wouldn't wish that on my worst enemy. But I, I do think that there's an area in, in section five points six of that report, of that plan that lays out what the mitigations would be. And what I gather is that it lays out a specification for how much land will be protected in exchange for areas that are impacted, whether it is a temporary impact or a permitted impact. And, you know, whether it's riparian and wetland or whether it's foraging up, upland dispersal kind of habitat. It made some distinctions there. And then there was a section that described where land was being acquired. So my question is, it sounds to me like the intention is to make that land above the pipeline and in the little buffer around it, pretty, pretty different than the way it is now. If you look at it from the perspective of a frog or a snake. And my question is, is there any accounting for mitigation land associated with the lands that are going to be affected in this way?
I would defer to PG&E. My, it's been a while since I read that document. My understanding is that is largely administered by US Fish and Wildlife Service. So I'm not sure where the city weighs in on that. I mean, it is a standalone coastal development permit. I think we have some leeway, but not, not necessarily based on what's in the Habitat Conservation Plan.
Yeah. Okay. So I don't want to get to the point of making judgments here. The reason I'm asking is so I can understand it in the context of Bolsachica. If the impacts are in this area, then the mitigations need to be, it seems to be in this area. And I'm not quite sure, since I can't account for where they are, it's hard for me to assess the nature of the mitigation. Let me see. With respect to the visual resources, I appreciated the visual resource simulations that were provided in the report. When I looked at the area, I noticed that there were some greenhouses that were sort of on the other side of the creek. And, you know, I'm wondering what impact, instead of looking down the road, sort of in the direction of the roadway driver, if you were a passenger who was a gog at the scenery looking up at the hills. Are we exposing those greenhouses in a way that they're not exposed now?
In my judgment, no. The trees are
I don't have a judge.
Are pretty close to the highway. They're basically at the bottom of the, there's a steep slope that comes down from the highway and they're mostly right along that strip towards the bottom of the slope. Behind there, there are hundreds of additional eucalyptus trees separating the trees removed from the greenhouses over on the other side of the creek. I don't see that it would substantially change that.
Okay, thank you. That, you saved me a lot of time with Google Earth just now.
And one of the problems is because there's no road shoulder there, you, I've gone out there and you're, you're literally sort of taking your life in your hands to try and get out there and take some photos and see what's what there.
I, I, I trust, I believe you're in good faith here. If you say it's not going to impact the views looking up at the hills, I'll, I'll believe that. I just couldn't tell from the pictures. There was some ambiguity about the quality of the ag pond. I noticed that in some sections of the text, we talked about it as abandoned and other sections, we talked, it was referenced as potentially abandoned. And this is not a surprise topic. We've talked about but my ending is that there's no, there's no evidence to suggest that that pond has been in any agricultural use over the past 10 years. Is that, that you're aware of? Is that correct?
I believe you're probably correct. Problem is, we don't have exact data on the last time somebody pumped water in or out of it, that sort of thing. But it's, it's been a number of years. And I believe the, the definition, the zoning code is, it hasn't been used for, I think it's five years. And it's, I think almost certainly over five years, although we can't pinpoint an actual date. The context for that discussion was whether or not 100-foot buffer would apply from a wetland, because the zoning code makes a special case that agricultural ponds don't have any sort of buffers around them compared to other ponds. And in this case, there are exceptions for utilities and maintenance within 100-foot buffer, even if it does apply. The real cutoff is when you start getting within 20 feet. And in this case, there's about 50 feet from where the trees are to where the top of bank for the pond and most of the vegetation is. And so there's a pretty big buffer there. And again, that's why we, we tried to move most of the activity out to the highway side, away from the pond. There are a couple of existing chain link fences in there that sort of isolate that pond. And it's basically keeps the workers out of that area, no accidental, you know, things going on or somebody driving a truck over there. It's, that's, that's the idea is that it's consistent with our policies and regulations, even if it is, even if a 100-foot buffer does apply, this project would be allowed as long as it's 20 feet from what we classify as the pond and associated vegetation.
I completely agree with you about the riparian buffer or the wetland buffer. My question is because it also extends to the value of habitat for frogs and snakes. That's a different policy and a different consideration. And it makes a difference whether it's abandoned or not with respect to those policies. So that was the, that was the miss for that question. I, I was, I need to be schooled on the tech concept, because, you know, this is my third round at being on the planning commission. And I don't think I've ever seen a project in which we talked about timbering in Half Moon Bay. And I'm just, what I don't understand is what protections are afforded to land and adjacent uses in timbering activities? Is there a Reader's Digest thumbnail version? Or is this something that I should just let be until the next time around?
Let anybody weigh in who wants to. But as I recall, they're linked to an approved timbering plan. I don't think there is such a thing, although the eucalyptus trees were originally planted as something that would be harvested for timber. But obviously, nobody's been harvesting them for quite a while. But I think the distinction is if you have, it usually applies to Forest Service areas where oftentimes it's Forest Service approves a timber plan for a region and that your local regulations defer to that plan. I don't believe that would apply to anything here. And maybe Winter has greater insight on that or Jill.
Anybody? You need to unmute, I think.
I was trying to be fancy and use my space bar instead of actually clicking the unmute thing because I am notoriously slow at actually doing a real unmute. But I don't have greater insight on the, on the timbering. I did, if I could, just respond quickly to the question you raised about the HCP and the underlying federal environmental documents. I just wanted to reiterate what Doug was saying about this being really a standalone ISMND and that I think I would just direct the commission to looking at the mitigation measures that are in here to make sure you feel that they're adequate. And you'll see there's a reference to the HCP, the, in the analysis when it's determining whether the project is consistent with the HCP, but the individual bio mitigation measures is, is what's at stake in this, in this environmental document. And the city is going to have to decide whether those measures are adequate to mitigate.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. It was a reference, I think, in the staff report to an NCCP for this project. Did the Department of Fish and Wildlife approve a natural community conservation plan for this? Or am I just not remembering right? Wouldn't be the first time.
Off the top of my head, I don't recall. PG&E
Okay.
Way in on that one.
Chris?
Uh, yeah, can you, yep, can you repeat the question for me again?
Yeah, just, I seem to remember a reference to a natural resources or natural community conservation plan as in something that was approved by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife pertaining to this project. And I, I could easily be mistaken, but I seem to remember references to that somewhere.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. If Vic's on, that's a little more in her wheelhouse and I can let her speak to them.
Very good.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now. No, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife.
I'm afraid we lost you.
I apologize. I think that was my fault. I'm sorry. Just give me one second. And she, she can unmute. It's just delayed. There it is. Okay, you can talk, Vic. Sorry.
That's okay. The California Department of Fish and Wildlife has not created it. And I think it's NCCP for this particular area. I think in the ISMND under the biological resources, I think there's reference to looking at if any of those plans are within your project area. Maybe that's where that came from.
Right, okay. No, thank you very
Chair Benjamin, I do have Patrick from SWCA who raised his hand and I'm not sure if he wanted to speak or not.
Thank you.
So just one second. Patrick, you're on. I didn't know if you wanted to speak or not. You had your hand raised.
Thank you for helping me with that.
Yeah, I was gonna, the, the Natural Community Conservation Plan is a CECL threshold. So we were required to evaluate whether or not a conservation plan applied to the project area, which is, you did see that word referenced throughout the document, but only in the context of the CECL threshold itself.
Right, okay. Thank you very much. So I think most of my other comments were related to assessments or potential concerns rather than clarifying questions. Sarah, was there anything that I wrote about that you wanted to hear more about? And if so, can you ask it?
Sorry, can you hear me? I'm having some connection issues.
Yes.
I, I don't at the moment. So I'll let others go ahead. Sorry.
Okay. Did anybody else have any clarifying questions? I apologize for occupying so much airtime there.
I'm gonna take a second to post a concern as a question to city staff. The context here is we're talking about, you know, dozens and dozens of mature trees. Quite a few heritage trees are going to be removed on a visual corridor. And it's something that the community is going to see every day and they're going to see it as soon as it happens. I appreciate the importance of protecting our water, protecting our power, or protecting our telco. These are very important things. But I'd like to understand, big picture, from city staff's perspective, what are we going to do to mitigate the visual resource in the immediate area that our community is going to see, that visitors are going to see? I just want to understand the big picture perspective, like how are we going to address this? Because, look, I, I saw what you, you did. The, I love the, the way that you removed the trees using Photoshop. It's fantastic, or whatever you use, it was fantastic. But I just want to understand city staff's perspective on how the community is going to react in the big picture perspective on, what are we really going to do to address that concern? And I understand people don't want stuff replanted on the property, but help me understand that. Help me, help me think through how we're dealing with it.
Well, I can weigh in on this. If we go to the northeast part in the eucalyptus woodlands, we spent some time on that. And as I mentioned earlier, the trees And as I mentioned earlier, the trees that are removed are they're at the, it's a steep hill. It's probably fifty feet down to where the trees are start growing, and then they extend up, you know, a hundred feet. And so the important consideration here is that when you're looking from the road in that direction, what you're going to see is a backdrop of a lot of really huge eucalyptus trees that are behind the ones that are being removed. And in a car going, you know, hopefully more than ten, fifteen miles an hour most of the time. And it's also a fairly bleak angle because of the, the road geometry, the curves, the narrowness. It's I don't when we looked at it, we don't see it as a huge change for people driving by there. The ones that are going to stand out a little bit more are the, that row of cypress trees. As you go a little bit further west, those, there, there's a certain rhythm to the spacing of those trees. They extend all the way down almost to Main Street. And like I said, there's just a lot of utilities there. So I don't think we can really replicate replanting in a way that replicates what it looked like before. Now, again, we may be able to move a little bit further from the road, plant some trees, sort of more focused around that pond, provide some shade over the pond, which a lot of wildlife use for the, the shadow makes it harder for predators to find them. It would, it would be a little more complex, a little more depth to the visual effect driving by. But again, we're kind of limited just because of all the existing utilities there. And, and so that's our answer in a sort of less than perfect world.
So roughly speaking, two thirds or so of the trees are going to be in an area where there's a eucalyptus backdrop. So it's visually jarring. The remainder quarter to one third will be along the post property. And Post has expressed flexibility on replanting. And PG&E would say, yeah, you can replant, just don't do it right next. Don't do it right on top of the corridor because we don't want to have to deal with this. So my, if you can clarify that point first.
Well, one of the complications is Post, at some point wasn't very excited about planting trees. And then the city made an offer on the property. And I think they may defer to the city's judgment on what they want there since they're buying it. So there's, if the city already owned the land, I think we'd have a pretty clear answer. We're in a little bit of a gray area right now.
Okay. I mean, I'm just looking at the optics from a public perspective when they come in. Not all of the trees are going to be removed. It's a portion of them. And the visuals you provided are super helpful. I, I just would like us to, I'd like city staff to come up with a plan to, you know, a recommendation, I guess, is, is all we can ask for of how we'd like to see this addressed. Because, you know, people are going to, some people are going to be upset about this. And, you know, it does impact scenic resource coming into Half Moon Bay. And so even though we don't have the power to make the decision now, having a recommendation from city staff, I think would help. And it would mitigate some of the impact from a public feedback.
Okay, I will take that as a vote to not focus exclusively on habitat value, but also to address visual quality from, from the highway. And I think that's a totally appropriate approach.
That's my feedback. I mean, I think that, that is my feedback. I do think the biological concerns are important, but the community is going to react negatively to the visual resource.
Either or. I'm sorry, Rick. I didn't mean to walk on you. I just, to piggyback on your comment, I don't think this is either or. I think it's and. But I, I don't want to get, we may be jumping the gun in terms of assessment here. Any other clarifying questions, Rick?
No, I'm good. Thank you. I, I think I've gotten, I think Doug's done a great job of giving you feedback on my question.
Okay, that gave me a chance to think about a couple of other clarifying questions from my comments. From a biological perspective, you know, there was that conversation about whether the eucalyptus chip should be distributed along the right of way. Do we have an assessment of the biological impact of eucalyptus? On, you know, my understanding was that it, it impacted the soil in a, in a negative way in terms of habitat. Maybe SWCA can, can comment on the potential impacts of chipped eucalyptus in the Puyallup Creek watershed. Chris?
He just needs to unmute.
Yeah, this is Chris, PG&E. You know, the, we're more than happy to spread, spread the yew chips. There is a little bit of potential there to create a little bit of soil diversity, you know, chemically inside of, of the soil there. Personally, I, I would rather just chip and haul it. Especially down there, the soils tend to stay a little moist. And if we get any of the seeds that happen to make it through the chipper, we're basically reseeding that area, and that's kind of counterproductive. So in this case, I mean, we always love to, to leave the green waste on site. It's, it's, you know, it's better for the environment typically. But in this case, with these eucalyptus, I'd, I'd honestly, I'd rather just haul it off.
You know, no, I, I, I probably didn't phrase my question clearly. I have reservations about leaving it in sight for the reasons that it might impact the, the quality of the soil. So I think we're in agreement about that. But I, I just wanted to, and I intended to pose the question to SWCA, and I was mistaken, and I apologize for naming Chris when Chris is the representative from PG&E. Was there a comment from staff or SWCA on this topic?
I, I don't see a, an issue with that. We've already noted that the diseased Monterey pine should be hauled off site to a licensed facility. And some property owners had said they didn't want the eucalyptus spread. I don't think saying that all of it would be chipped off really changes the CECL evaluation in a significant way as far as vehicle trips and that sort of thing. So I, I think we're, we're within the bounds of what has been evaluated. It would be more of a minor modification.
Okay. I think I'm out of clarifying questions as hard as I'm trying. So if no one else has.
I, I have one, sorry, that just occurred to me.
Go for it.
So this is Commissioner Polgar. Sorry, I'm, and my connection's not great. So it helps if I have my video off. I can hear everybody. So I wanted to just ask the applicant about, is it, it was my understanding that in terms of the issue for the pipeline, it's really the, the tree roots. Is that correct? Or is it also that you need to be able to have access to the pipeline the whole way along? I, I, I just want to clarify what the, the specific that need, you know, I'm, I'm not questioning the need to remove vegetation. I'm just asking which is the, what is the specific issue in terms of having like trees and, and the vegetation over or next to, too near to the pipeline?
Yeah, this is, this is Chris, veg management for PG&E. That's a, that's a great question. There's not a single answer to that. It's more of kind of a, a universal need. So we, we would like access for first responders. So if we have an issue with the pipeline and we need access, the trees and in the brush on top of the right of way, they're going to impede that access. It's also the tree, tree root pipe interaction. And what that does is the, the roots tend to wrap themselves around the gas transmission pipe because we're running at a high pressure. And that high pressure creates a little bit of condensation. So that tends to build up around the cathodic protection of the pipe. And that prevents that pipe from rusting. So when we have that root pipe interaction over time, we, we have seen that cathodic compression, cathodic protection deteriorate, deteriorate and in start causing issues that way. And then another, another reason is when we have these trees on top of the gas transmission line, if we have a failure, so if we have a complete root ball failure, a lot of times when these, when these pipes are put in, they're, they're trenched. So that's a different soil type than the, the surrounding soil that hasn't been trenched. So it tends to be a little weaker. And if you have that, that tree failure, most of the time, from what we've seen, is that loose soil will kind of undermine the pipe, and that causes a stability issue. And then if you have a well there, that pipe can droop down. And that causes, you know, a significant issue as far as, you know, how that utility remains in the ground. So there's a lot of different issues there with access. And then, you know, we can, on a, on a less kind of impactful way, you know, we like to get, do our sniff tests with our Picaro cars, LiDAR and that kind of stuff. But that's more, not as much as a safety issue as, as kind of the three major ones that, that I just went over. So that's kind of the, the whole safety message behind the program and, and why we're going after these trees on top of our right of way.
And Chris, a follow-up question. Does, is there a difference in, like, are certain trees, do they tend to be worse or better in terms of the, kind of that issue of the tree root, uh, interaction with the pipeline?
Yeah, so the, the best trees are the ones that are not on top of our pipeline. It's not species specific, and, and we would go down a really rabbit hole there. Because, you know, I can't see it. You can't see it. It has to do with soil conditions. It has to do with water conditions, you know, irrigation. There's so many factors that, I mean, we would literally have to dig up seven thousand miles of pipe to, to, you know, really dig in there.
No, no worries. I just was wondering if there was a, a clear, you know, answer about, you know, difference between species. So it sounds like there isn't. So no worries, no need to go down the rabbit hole.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate it. We've seen some crazy stuff out there. I've seen roots from forty feet away that have, you know, grabbed other utilities and, and then eventually made their way to ours. It's, uh, it's, it's, there's a lot, a lot of stuff going on underground, so we're doing our best to mitigate that.
Yeah, just piling, this is Jimmy again, the chair. Just piling on to Sarah's question. I appreciate the comment about trees. What about the understory vegetation, you know, the smaller, not, not the shrubs, but the grasses or the, the, what are they called? Bromes? Do they represent an impact or do they an adverse impact on the quality of the pipe? Or for that matter, Patrick, Patrick, you may want to weigh on this. Other utilities that might be in this right of way. I'm just trying to determine, what I'm going for here is understanding whether the right answer is to minimize the vegetation or whether there's a quality of vegetation that is less impactful. So I'm trying to be informational rather than preferential, if that makes sense. Am I coming across?
Yeah, and so we've, we've made exemptions, especially for like standalone landscape herbaceous vegetation. A lot of that is all pipe compatible. We have a list of, of acceptable stuff. A lot of like the blackberry coyote brush, that kind of stuff. Although it may not be impacting the cathodic protection, it's, it's really an access issue at that point. Especially along like that eucalyptus grove. It, it's pretty dense and thick in there. But there are certain limitations, especially when we get out of a rural and more into an urban atmosphere. There's a lot more low growing vegetation that, that we can accept being on top of the, the utility there.
I see. Patrick, do you have anything, any perspective on these questions I meant to bring you earlier? Is SWCA still with us?
He should be able to talk right now. There he is, yep.
Thank you, Patrick.
As, as far, as far as Chairman, it sounds like you're sort of getting at what, to what effect does the understory vegetation within the right of way have on listed species? And to that effect, that wasn't explicitly analyzed in the ISMND. You know, we, we basically focused our analysis on the designated, you know, ESHA insensitive areas that are more suitable to those special status species due for, due to a variety of reasons. Just greater quality of habitat, breeding grounds. We didn't consider to the same effect, you know, to, to what effect that the understory and locked vegetation, vegetation that was spread on the right of way would have on the dispersal abilities of those species. You know, it's certainly something we can, you know, look at and include in, in the final revised version. If so desired.
I know I, it sounds like I'm, I'm trying to jump the gun, but I'm really not. I want to be sure to get all the clarifying questions and then open the public hearing at some point. Colleagues, do you have any other clarifying questions?
I'll be honest, I, I didn't understand that last response and context of the conversation we're having about the understory vegetation. Is it, is it just more? I, I guess I didn't understand what that, the, the information in that context.
Let me tell you how I interpreted, and then Patrick can correct me if I got it wrong. My question was, you know, what is the impact if instead of having the larger root creating pipe threatening trees? If we, if the area was covered with grassy herbaceous kinds of vegetation? And would that work? And I think Patrick jumped to, you may be thinking to condition the project to replace the, the trees with herbaceous vegetation. And yes, that would be okay for the pipes, but it's hard to get access to it in very rural areas. When we get into more areas that are approaching urban areas, maybe we can live with it. But that's kind of what I think he was thinking, I was thinking. And he said, we didn't analyze that in terms of environmental impacts, but we could. Did I, did I hear you right, Patrick?
Yeah, that's, 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 that's right. You know, I, I think that the question before was really focused on, you know, to what effect does the vegetation have on the, the structural integrity of the pipeline? I, you know, I, I consider your question to be more biologically focused. So I was, you know, responding to, you know, the potential impacts of that type of herbaceous vegetation within the right of way.
Oh, great. That clears it up.
Does that help then, Sarah?
Yeah, that clears it up.
Okay, anybody else on clarifying questions?
So we've spent so much time on this. I've had a chance to reflect a little bit more, Jimmy. So he has, so.
Go for it.
So there's two things here. One, we have a project going on right now that's both a safety and a continuation of service project, right? We have a gas line We have a gas line that could be impacted by these trees, which, uh, heaven forbid, would be a safety issue akin to what happened in San Bruno. So we want to be very mindful of not delaying a project here. But I, I really want to understand, like, from a, and, and look, I'm not trying to throw dirt at anybody. I'm just trying to understand, how did we get here? How did we get to a situation where we planted a bunch of trees on top of a gas pipeline? And how do we make sure we don't do that again? Like, I just want to understand how we got here from a city staff perspective? And what are we going to do to make sure we don't come back to the same type of problem in the future?
Well, the, the, the short answer is it happened long before any of us were here. Um, so I, I, I don't know. It seems to me that it's certainly for construction projects, people would go out and locate all of the underground utility lines before they did any work. I'm kind of guessing people thought their trees, trees are good and they just planted them. I, you know, I don't know. In hindsight, yeah, it probably wasn't the best idea.
Um, Rick, I think that the right, the, the answer to that question is ask Uncle Mike. Mike for knows everything.
Just a clarification, uh, uh, so which, not all the trees that are being removed were planted.
Right. I think the tree, I think the trees along post were planted as part of the
Yes.
nine, the widening project. And so those are ones that strike me as like, uh, my point is simply this. We have a map of all of the important infrastructure. And when things like plantings or superficial projects happen, my, my ask is can we just have a way of just making sure we don't impact these important pieces of infrastructure that may not be visually apparent but are under the ground? It's, it's, that, that's really where I was going with it.
Uh, thank you, Rick. I think that that's probably speaks to the, uh, land, maybe conditions in the landscaping part of the LCP, but probably not agendas for discussion tonight. But good point. So if there are no other questions, I'd like to, uh, barring objection of the commission, I'd like to open the public hearing on this item. Um, I'm not seeing any objections, so this is me gabbling in the public hearing. And, uh, are there any people in the public who would like to speak to us about this tonight?
Um, I have seen no one raising their hands currently, so I don't. Most everyone that's on is applicant representative or applicant, um, but I, I see none.
So since the, um, since the, this item was going to be continued anyway, and I want to give the public an opportunity to weigh in as we get clarity. Maybe, um, is the proper form to leave the public hearing open for the moment? Or plan to reopen the public hearing at a subsequent hearing in, in July? What is the preference in the advice, Winter?
Um, I would recommend closing it now and reopening it. It might just be easy, uh, to manage the remainder of the meeting tonight, um, to have that clarity.
Okay, um, with the, with the intention of making the public forum open, uh, again in the future, I'd like to close the hearing now and bring it back to the commission to talk about our preferences for the project. And our reaction is, uh, to provide staff with clarity in order for them to bring back, um, a, a version that we feel more comfortable with in July. Who would like to begin?
I'll start, Chair Benjamin, if you like.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, well, thanks to Doug and Steph and, and the team that put this together. Uh, one of the longer, uh, reports on a project. I appreciate how comprehensive it is. Um, I just have three things I want to speak to. I, I support the, the initiative that staff has used to move towards, um, banning herbicide from this project, uh, in, in, due to the proximity to Pilar Cetus Creek. Secondly, it isn't, as Commissioner Hernandez said a moment ago, it is an important infra, infrastructure safety project that we do need to find a way forward on. And there is sensitive habitat right there. So I support the concept of closing, uh, eastbound highway 92 for a, a small number of nights to, to do that work, without making it more invasive in the, in the habitat than, than we need to be. I know that that's inconvenient and everybody hates to see the highways closed, but I think it is the right thing to do in this case. I, I would like to think that as far as the replacement trees go, in the southwest area where we're taking out a dozen or more mature trees, I'd like to think that there's some justification for a bit more than a one-to-one ratio of replacement. I'd support maybe one-to-one replacement in the eucalyptus grove in the northeast area, but I'd argue for something greater than that in the southwest area. Just because it's a, as far as the quality of the habitat goes, it's a kind of a catastrophe to have such a number done overnight, as it were. So I'd be in favor of greater than one-to-one replacement ratio. Uh, it's hard to give staff definitive guidance on where that ought to be, but I think there are at least a couple of good reasons for, for looking to, to have the benefit of the replacements close to where the, the trees have, have, uh, have been removed. So I'd be in favor of urging staff to look at, at, uh, plan for the replacement trees as close to that as possible. Thank you, uh, Chair Benjamin. That's all I have right now.
Uh, okay, um, Commissioner Hernandez, can we have your thoughts?
I support Commissioner Ruddick's view. I think the, the more important trees are not the eucalyptus, but, um, the cypress coming into town, um, a multi, a multiple replacement, I would be in favor of two to, two to one or three to one, um, as we've done for other projects around the city. Um, but overall, I, I just want to say, more importantly, I support moving forward with this project quickly. Um, the, we live in an area that is subject to power outages and disruptions to service. And I wouldn't want anything in our control to affect our community when we can deal with it proactively. So I, I support moving forward with this. I would encourage city staff to think about how we communicate to the public on this issue. Um, and, you know, getting the message out to the review and, uh, other resources because, you know, people are going to react strongly to, uh, any kind of change to the visual corridor. So I just think we should think about how we get ahead of that as a community.
Thank you, Rick. Anything else?
No, that's.
Commissioner Pogar.
Okay, great. Um, so yeah, just reiterating a couple of things from Commissioner Ruddick and Commissioner Hernandez. Um, I, yes, I also agree that, that this is really important infrastructure project. And I, I, uh, second Rick's comment about support getting, moving forward quickly, getting this done. Um, and, uh, both because it's very important and also making sure that the project's done, um, in a way that is protective and also efficient, so that we aren't dragging it out. Um, I also agree, I agree with Commissioner Ruddick about supporting the closing of highway 92 to allow for those couple, you know, during the nights to, um, because that's, uh, more protective of the species in the way that they can pull out the, use the equipment to pull out the trees. Um, I, as far as the replacement trees, I'm fine with one-to-one for all of them. Um, uh, I do want to see that, I don't, I don't think, I, I support having the replacement trees be, uh, uh, planted at least, uh, within half a day. Um, I would also say closer to the project location would be preferable. Um, but I like the idea, I think one of the things Doug perhaps you said was about, uh, folding it in, integrating it with other mitigation that the city's doing to have a, a more robust, um, uh, habitat restoration with trees, like in an area that where it really, you can create, you can grow the trees that you want, that are good, um, native species that would really support habitat and be in an area that you want, um, and address issues. And so I think, I think if you can fold that into a, an existing or another project and really make it more robust, I would go, be very supportive of something like that, um, and having the city do that. I think that that's more valuable. I strongly, I really think it's a fool's errand to try to replant trees where the eucalyptus are. Um, and I certainly do not want to see the replacement trees be eucalyptus. Uh, I think that was a given, but I just wanted to get that on the record. So, um, I, I do want to really, so my other comments may not be as, uh, as, as in line with some of the other things I've heard. But I, I would like to take a step back and really think about this project and the impacts and kind of the broader context of, uh, what the construction and kind of what, what's happening out there. Um, so I do, I real, I just, I, I want to reiterate that this is a, as far as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, um, but this is not a, this is handwork. Essentially, this is hand labor to remove these things. It's not, um, bulldozers, et cetera. And so you're, it's handwork that the biological, the mitigation measures, um, specifically bio, the bio dash two, um, specifies that there'll be a biomonitor out there. Um, I actually think that it's a little bit overdone because it says if there's any activity, work activity, which to me is ridiculous, because if you're driving a, a vehicle, you know, to the staging area to pick up chipped wood, uh, there is really no need to have a biological monitor, but it is what it is. But clearly that will be, have, you'll have a biological monitor out there for all of the vegetation removal, which is really where the concern for impacts of species needs to be monitored. Um, so I think that it's quite protective in that respect. Um, I also, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, so it basically, I think that there's a lot of precaution that's gone into to make sure that it's as protective as it can be. Um, I also would actually point out that it's kind of two different projects. There's the southwest and the northeast project. And to me, they're, they're pretty different in, in many respects, partly because I would almost see the northeast project as, by removing eucalyptus, that's actually, I think, a, a benefit, um, in our area. They are overtaking, um, and I don't think that they are good habitat. Um, it may be that species, species do use them, but I want to be very clear that, uh, when, when we talk about like ESHA, for instance, uh, even, even if you're talking about a habitat that maybe is not considered high quality, it has to be a habitat that's actually supporting and containing those species. So unless the, the eucalyptus is suit, actually containing, for instance, monarchs, it's not. It's not ESHA. Eucalyptus is not by default ESHA, just because it could contain those things. And so I want to be really clear about that because, um, that has repercussions for other projects and our ability as a, as a city to manage this highly invasive, very dangerous species in terms of fire hazard. And so we want us to be really careful about going down that road of classifying things of eucalyptus in particular as ESHA, because, um, it'll make it very hard, uh, for us to manage it in the ways that we need to. It's, it's moving a lot faster than we are, um, at this point in terms of taking over. So I just have a, a cautionary tale as someone who works in natural resource management and man, and does these projects from design through construction. I'll tell you that I, you know, all my projects are restoration projects, uh, but you would not believe how difficult it becomes when you make every, uh, a species like eucalyptus, for instance, become you, the requirements for review, uh, to address it. Um, I have actually reached out to U S Fish and Wildlife Service, um, to discuss eucalyptus. And they have point blank said that it is not good habitat, uh, for species and that there is a much better, just because you have it and they can, you know, they might use it, you can do better, let's put it that way. And you shouldn't, uh, go about trying to protect something that is a, a very dangerous invasive species and actually is takes over habitat that's suitable for other species as well. So there's a lot going on there. And I just want to be a little bit careful about kind of our getting too worked up about the removal of the eucalyptus trees. Um, along those lines, um, I think that, again, taking a step back about where this project, what this project is doing and what's required longer term. So to, because the trees are an issue for the pipeline, um, and eucalyptus, uh, once you cut it down and have the stumps left, it regrows really fast. And so you can't, obviously PG&E is not going to be able to let it just regrow. Um, it's going, they're going to have to manage it. And so I would point out that that's going to require a lot more, that's going to require much more frequent, um, uh, activity in this area that is, that is sensitive habitat, like, or provide, could provide, uh, and is adjacent to sensitive habitat for, uh, endangered species. And so if you want to minimize impacts, you're better off doing this project and making sure that it lasts longer. And I would, I know this is probably not very popular, but I would actually strongly, if in, in an absence of the confusion or kind of the uncertainty and the interim prohibition from, based on the, uh, legal uncertainty with EPA right now. But in absence of that, I would be fully supportive of using, um, a very, you know, a very carefully applied herbicide to the stumps to avoid the long-term repeated kind of, of impacts to this area of having to go back in and constantly remove the, the, the regrowth from the eucalyptus. Um, and I do not want to see that flexibility, at least. I, I understand that there's concerns about using herbicide. I will point out that we live in an agricultural, uh, area where herbicides are used. Uh, so I just want to be clear that this is not spraying herbicide. This is a very, uh, point per, uh, application, uh, done. So this is different even than what we are seeing elsewhere. Um, so I just want to point that out. And I would like the, the city to have the flexibility, depending on what findings, obviously, with the U S EPA. I want them to have the flexibility to still allow that. Um, I, I, and I'm, you know, maybe that I get outvoted, that's fine, but I'm going to put that on the record that I think that's a valuable tool in the toolbox, um, especially with the care that it be doing, be done in this case. Um, and then in absence of the herbicide option, I don't see why PG&E shouldn't try some other, uh, take, you know, there, there's no harm in trying some biological, uh, approaches or physical approaches to, um, uh, suppressing regrowth. And so, um, I would highly recommend that, uh, staff confer with the, the local district conservationist for the Natural Resource Conservation Service, um, and who has thought a lot about this and worked with landowners on these kinds of issues, um, in terms of invasive, uh, eucalyptus and dug fur. And I would just point out that like, that there are things that they could try and they probably won't be as effective as just using the herbicide. But if you're not able to use the herbicide, why not try some of these other things? Like even smothering the, the stumps with, um, with the chipped eucalyptus. Uh, I, I realize there's reasons for not wanting to spread eucalyptus ships everywhere, but maybe there's a, a place where they could at least test to see if that works. So I want to see them, we, you know, think about that if they can't, if they don't have the opportunity to do herbicides. Um, and, um, so those are, uh, I still have more, I'm sorry. I had a lot of thoughts on this one.
Load.
Uh, so I, so those, those are kind of some thoughts on those, uh, items in the herbicide and removal of the, um, eucalyptus. Uh, I, I want to make a, a point here about one of the bio, the mitigation measures. Again, I think it's, uh, item K in bio dash two, um, which talks about wildlife exclusion fencing. And so I want to point out that, um, with the, with a biomonitor, there really isn't a need for a wildlife exclusion fencing. Those are redundant by any means. And I would go further to point out that, but, but wildlife exclusion fencing requires a, a lot of ground disturbance. To give you an idea of what it would require to install that around that, um, the, the ag pond, every four feet, you'd have to, uh, you have to dig it into the, the ground. You see, first of all, it's a clear the, the little air. it into the, the ground. You see, first of all, it's to clear the, the little air, the grassy vegetation to be able to install it. Like, you wouldn't have to do like a lot of area, but you still have to just clear the ground a bit to actually install the, the exclusion fencing. And every four feet, it requires digging into the ground because it has to be flush with the ground. Because the whole point of exclusion fencing is that basically, there's nothing that can get through except by going through the little holes that are kind of taped into the bottom of them. So it involves a lot of disturbance of the ground anyways, that probably is, if, if you're looking at protecting all of those little burrows, may not be very compatible with that if you're, you know, especially if it's in upland areas, if you're, because you want to protect the San Francisco potential burrowing habitat for garter snake. So it may not be so compatible with that. And based on quite a bit of reading and interviews, because this has come up a lot in the projects that I've managed, it, wildlife exclusion fencing is not very effective. And in some cases, it's actually a bad option because it ends up entrapping, trapping the wildlife up against the fence because they're not actually going to find the little holes right when the predator's coming. And they end up getting, it turns into a little buffet for the predators, which maybe, you know, it's a good thing for the predators and we like our raptors, for instance. But I'm just saying, like, the intended purpose doesn't, isn't necessarily served by wildlife exclusion fencing, and it requires hand installation and a lot of ground disturbance. I would also point out that if you want to keep this project to the shortest and most efficient time possible, the amount of time to install wildlife fencing will add quite a bit of time to it. So just putting that out there, I'm not suggesting, I think that the measure right now is flexible because it basically says that the biomonitor or biologist would come to the city and discuss the, there would be a decision made about whether their fencing needed. But I just want to put that out there that I'm, I do not think that that's actually a very effective mitigation measure, especially, like, certainly because in lieu of the fact, like, in light of the fact, excuse me, that we have a biomonitor out there. So that's some really key things I want to point out. I also, there was one other point I wanted to make. Yeah, I, I do, I just want to go back again to the, the, the concern about, I guess I, I'll stop there, sorry. If I have further comments, I may, there's a couple other things, but I'd like to give other people a chance to, to sound, to sound off now.
Thank, thank you very much, Sarah, for your, for your thoughts. And I'll give you a chance to reload. I think I'm the other person at this point. So, look, I don't think anyone is thinking that this is a bad project. I don't think anybody is thinking, we don't want to go forward with this project. I think characterizing it as safety is fair. It is not fair to use that as a bulldozer to run roughshod over the conditions that would be required of any development in local coastal project. So I think it's really important to separate the virtues, the many virtues of this project with respect to safety, from the requirements that it has to conform to, the standards that it has to conform to in order to be a suitable project that, that we can in good conscience approve as being consistent with our LCP and its implementing plan. And I think a, a lot of those issues have, have been surfaced today. I felt like the, one of the key areas where I felt the staff report could be a little stronger is in recognizing that there are policies that are relevant to sensitive habitat that are not the subject of the analysis. In particular, looking at LCP policies in chapter three, that's three twenty-one, three twenty-two, three thirty-three, and three thirty-five. These are policies that are associated with the appropriate kinds of development in the habitat of rare and endangered species. And they are, they do not require that you actually found, for example, the San Francisco garter snake. There are other policies, which I did, did not mention, that are more restrictive in those areas. And I think it's incumbent on us in our, in our analysis to reflect on that. Those policies do not make a powerful distinction between habitat that supports egg masses or, you know, wetland habitat. It's habitat or it's not habitat. It's marginal or not marginal is not, is not the issue. It either is supporting or containing or it's not. I appreciate Commissioner Polgar's comments about the, the woes associated with eucalyptus. And I only regard eucalyptus really itself as having habitat value in the context of its raptor habitat. I think that it's a, I have some personal experience with it because I have a neighbor across the street who actually has eucalyptus that is in their backyard, growing adjacent to the Quahog Water Course. And I've watched them trim it back with the blessings of the city, and I've watched it grow back a couple of years later, just as Commissioner Polgar has predicted that it will. So I want to give props to her for recognizing that there's a trade-off between what you do and the additional impacts of going back in to look at it. In a sensitive habitat, you can do things like put down boards so you're not crushing microstructures in the soil. So I think it doesn't have to be a significant adverse impact. And if we had clarity on which of the herbicides were the right herbicides that would not impact not only the aquatic invertebrates, but also the animals that live in the sensitive habitats, I'd be open to considering those. We don't have them yet. So my suggestion would be to be open to an amendment to the permit if and when we know what those safer herbicides are. But I'm reluctant to go forward with a recommendation that we leave it to the discretion of the applicant at this time. No applicant is perfect. This is not a aspersion at PG&E. If we are, if we are going to minimize the amount of ground vegetation that is on the, the area above the pipes, which is clearly PG&E's preference at some level, I think it's important to acknowledge that even though that's Himalayan blackberry, and it's, there were two or three other species, they're not coming to mind right now. That, that may not be native habitat, but it's still valuable habitat. Jennings has commented in other presentations concerning half of Bayland about the value of these habitats for the frogs. And because the frogs are essential diet for the snakes, it's important this habitat for the snakes for forage. And therefore, if we're going to impact these areas, I think it's important to acknowledge that we're impacting resources that we protect under our LCP. As Winter said, independent of what the incidental take permits or the habitat conservation plan says, we have an obligation to protect that habitat. And one possibility that I was suggesting that Patrick quickly picked up on was the possibility that perhaps there could be herbaceous vegetation that wouldn't be threatening to our infrastructure in that site, that could, you know, provide a less impactful change in vegetation. And as Sarah mentioned, if the eucalyptus were to be transformed into that vegetative cover that is herbaceous, maybe we get a win. Maybe it's improved. I don't know. This is beyond my pay grade as a biologist, but I'm hoping that something nice could happen. If it doesn't, then I think it's important for us to recognize that we need to mitigate for that loss of habitat. And at the moment, that's not planting trees. That's finding a different way to manage that. I had read the, I think if I understood Winter correctly, I, I had been reading the HCP in hopes that I could point to the mitigations that were already there. But I realized from her comments that I can't do that. That what we have to look at is what the LCP requires in terms of minimizing impacts and where there are unavoidable impacts, doing something to recreate that habitat. As I understand that both achieved a decision, I don't think that that can be done, let's say, outside of our watershed. I think it needs to be done in some of the areas that staff has suggested. And I am not prejudiced as to respect which of those areas are the right ones. But I agree with Sarah, with Commissioner Polgar, excuse me, that we should be locating that vegetation, not gratuitously, but in places where it will thrive and really improve the quality of the habitat in a place where it's threatened. And there are plenty of those in the Pilosider's Creek watershed. If we do denude that area or even if we disturb it, the fact that there's Cape Ivey growing in the vicinity, it's identified in the biological study, is of special note because that Cape Ivey is going to aggressively colonize the disturbed area. It outcompetes everything that grows on the ground. And so it's going to be important to have a plan for managing that Cape Ivey independently of how we want the land to be developed, with, sorry, to be mitigated for whatever impacts are, are created. In my set of written comments to staff, I had a short laundry list of suggestions. And I touched, for example, on maybe understanding the noise impact a little bit. I felt like it was acknowledged, but it was kind of a hand wave. I didn't feel like I understood what the noise is. I'm not suggesting somebody goes out and does a dissertation on it or that we acquire a noise engineer to tell us what the right answer is. But if we have knowledge from other projects about how much noise weed whackers make and how much noise, you know, those chainsaws are going to make, and we, and we know how close they are to a sensitive receptor, whether that's, you know, the hilltop grocery or the high school when it's in session, or a raptor nest that's discovered in the proximity of a project prior to the beginning of the project. It makes sense for us to carry that information in good conscience. We should be doing that level of diligence before we say, before we greenlight the physical activities. That's what it means to, to mitigate. And if we know that already that it's going to be less than significant, and in my mind, that would be maybe an increase of less than three decibels in the human weighted scale, maybe that's okay too. But I don't know that based on the report that I have at the moment. And it would be helpful for us, I think, to have that clarity. There are also conditions that seem relevant to the dry period and the potential for a loss of communications. I made a reference to the possibility during this window that there could be a public safety power shutdown. And as you know, those are times when people who normally depend on commu, electronic communications may not be able to get those communications. That's not a time to have a project that could produce sparks and things like that, and consequences from sparks, operating on the, on the ground. So it makes sense to review the conditions of operation so that we know that we're not, we're not creating risks that we could easily avoid by timing the project to be someplace other than, at a time other than a public safety shutdown. Similarly, I was a bit surprised to see that the definition of not having rain was a probability of less than sixty percent. I grew up in Florida. In Florida, probability of less than sixty percent sounds like you're not having rain. In California, a probability of sixty percent in the summer means it's going to rain. And so it would be nice if, if, and maybe I'm all, all wet, if you'll pardon the mixing of metaphors, but I believe in this dry season, we should be able to have, find periods where it's, you know, five percent, ten percent, maybe fifteen percent chance of rain for a whole week. And, you know, these projects are not going to go on forever. And if they were interrupted, you know, roofers' projects get interrupted all the time. It's just a fact of life. So I'm hopeful that we can review the operating conditions in a way that reflects the realities of our Mediterranean summers and the hazards and the opportunities that we have to perform our work with, with minimal impact. I want to support Commissioner Hernandez's comments about visual resources. And I would just encourage staff in thinking about mitigation, whether the herbaceous vegetation might provide the kind of visual benefits. Maybe, maybe this area can support C N office or Cianus, however it's pronounced. You know, I defer to our planning director who knows, who has more knowledge of plants in her little finger than I have in my entire body. And, you know, maybe there are opportunities to landscape in this area that do not involve trees, that provide valuable habitat and that are beautiful, and would provide a backstop, sorry, a foreground with the hills and the other eucalyptus, the other trees that are not being removed as an attractive alternative. I will just say that if we do that without paying attention to the Cape Ivey, it is folly. It will be a dead, dead plant walking. Let's see. And finally, I want to support Commissioner Ruddick's observations about planting of trees. Even if we were accepting of a one-to-one ratio, I think it's important to acknowledge that there is mortality in the planting of trees. And if we're trying to achieve no net loss, one-to-one isn't enough. And in the case of trees that are not the eucalyptus, multiples would be an attractive way to resolve that. And I hope that we can, I hope that we can do that. So I think those are the things that come off the top of my head. Commissioner Polgar, you are going to take a minute to reload. Are you ready to start fire?
Yeah, just a couple things. One is, I think you, I wanted to thank you, Chair Benjamin, for pointing out the Cape Ivey issue. I think it is a big concern that that will just take over. And there's already a project that's happening on a, I don't know if it's a tributary or, well, anyways, a Royal de Leon, I think it is, that's, that's to remove Cape Ivey, kind of near Johnston House. So, so there's already, Cape Ivey's already a big issue, and it takes a lot, restoration to remove Cape Ivey once it's gotten down into the, you know, when it's like taken over a creek. So allowing more of it, agree that, and that, I don't, I don't necessarily have a great solution for that one. I will say that...
Goat fight Cape Ivey?
What'd you say?
Do goats fight Cape Ivey?
Goats will eat most things. They, they also will eat poison oak. So they, they, well, I'm not sure about that. But I, I wanted to point out a couple things, though. I, first of all, in the, the ISMND, the measures that pertain to, or it's in bio measure two, two, there's the sections that pertain to precipitation. And so first of all, I want to make clear that the measure, measures about kind of not working during rain or like with a certain amount of rain predicted, et cetera, all that, those measures are about not working in muddy conditions that might allow for delivery of sediment to the creeks. And so, or, or habitat destruction. So I want to make it really clear that if you get rain, if you, so if you get like a quarter inch of rain now, you know, it, you're not going to, even a quarter inch, that's, that's quite a bit, but still, it's really, you're not going to have mud, you know, for, for very long at all. In fact, you probably won't, because it's so dry. And so, but if you get that kind of rain in the winter, when things, conditions, the soil's already saturated and wet, that's very different. And the, the precautions in the, in the measure are for no measurable rain, which is pretty low, I would anticipate. Think, you know, I've seen measurements down to point one. So I just want to point out, they also, they only apply if the work is not done during the dry season. And so really what they're saying is like, if you're going to do it in the dry season, then you just continue to go ahead. I beg to differ with the comment about how it's no big deal to start and stop. This is not the same as like a roofing project and everything, like they, they, first of all, the, like, it's actually not so great to re, stop and restart for the critters, because you basically allow them to all come back and like recolonize. They've essentially got, you know, they get, they, there is some, like, they do get somewhat accustomed to there being some sort of activity there and are more likely to leave the area. If it's quiet for a while, they're going to come back. And then you end up having a higher likelihood of having impacts to, into the critters you care about. But also, there's a lot of like staging and other things that might have to be redone. And so it's just, it's just... And so it's just, it's just a point that it's, it's, you know, whether or not you care about costs, like I'm not talking about cost. I'm just talking about like potential impacts of the project and it just makes the project go on longer, which is more impacts. So you want to get the project done efficiently. And so stopping the project for some wetness that really isn't, you know, you're stopping the project, but you aren't actually, there's no impact of that rain. In terms of, or, you know, precipitation. You know, the, I, I very much would not want to see any changes, like right now, I think it's perfectly protective. Because it basically says during the dry season, you know, you're going to go ahead, but during any time outside of that dry season, it gives specific and pretty stringent. Requirements for what you, you know, for stopping the project, if there's even measurable precipitation. So I just, I, I think there's, those serve, those precipitation requirements serve a purpose and I don't want to see them made. Or applied in a way that is, kind of loses sight of that and just makes the project last longer. So I think that's really important. And then I also want to clarify that I was not suggesting that the applicant have the discretion to decide about herbicide. Application, assuming that everything was resolved by the EPA and we've had guidance and et cetera. I was, I was saying I wanted the city to staff to have the flexibility to have that option on the table to discuss. With the applicant and make a decision the city would make. I was not applying, saying that the applicant would just have this, this discretion. And I don't think that that's implied in the, in the staff report or the ISM and D that I saw.
Schooled by Commissioner Polgar. Well said. My only concern about the rain was the steep slopes adjacent to the Cypress trees. And the potential that footfalls in that area when it's wet could become the basis of erosion. But otherwise, I agree with your, your comments about rainfall. I missed that it was sixty percent chance of any measurable precipitation, but if it was. If it was, sorry, if there were measurable precipitation, it would stop. That's a, that's an interesting insight. With respect to the herbicides, you know, since the science is not there. I think the public expects the planning commission to be able to weigh in. And I think it's a decision that has to do with the stewardship of our lands. You know, certainly if a persuasive case can be made to persuade staff, it can be made to persuade the planning commission. And so I hope that you'd be comfortable with the freedom to seek an amendment to the permit that it will allow that. Once we had clarity on what the herbicides might be.
But yeah, I see your point. That makes sense. And, and also another thing to consider is that just because you don't apply the herbicides in the first year. Doesn't mean that even after you've had to go back and do maintenance to cut back the regrowth. You, you could always apply herbicide later on, you know, to the stumps if they're, you know, as they're continuing to regrow. You know, and that, so maybe it, it won't happen immediately. I'm just saying that, you know, it may turn out that it's much. In the grand, in the kind of overall look at the kind of benefits, trade offs, I guess I would say, it may be better to use herbicides. I, I see your point. I, I don't know.
And I see yours, Sarah. You know, I think that the great hope for Cape Ivy is to find a, an agent that can kill it an herbicide. Or a biological agent or something. It's just such an aggressive plant. And eucalyptus is sort of a similar, has a similar quality. I have no idea about this new water snail. It makes me want to go bury my head in an Esha somewhere. But, you know, I do think that, you know, it makes sense for us not. What is it that is said a foolish consistency is the hob gobble around small minds? I don't want to look and say herbicides never, but I think we should be taking a careful, a very careful look at it. And I appreciate your willingness to be open to seeing it here at the planning commission at some point in the future. So Sarah and I have had a lot of airtime. Steve or Rick, do you guys want to jump back in with more thoughts? Commissioner Ruttick.
Well, just to continue the herbicide discussion, I, I said a little while ago, I was supported. Not allowing it on this project near the creek. I, I understand Commissioner Polgar's. Experience in these areas and the, and the attractiveness of, of dealing a, a bigger blow to the eucalyptus especially would. Would make you wish that herbicide maybe is a useful weapon there. I, I just worry that so near the creek, even with the best of intentions, accidents and mishaps do happen. So I agree with Chair Benjamin's most recent summing up. That unless we get to a point where the process has revealed the more confidence in a safe herbicide. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in favor of doing it in this stage of this project. Thank you.
Rick?
I echo Commissioner Ruttick's comments and I don't think it's possible for me to add anything more intelligent than what my colleagues have already said.
Okay, so staff. Do you have, you know, Doug, do you feel like you have what you need? Are there areas where you'd like to get additional clarity or just Jill, do you want to weigh in on this?
I think Doug and I will probably need to take turns here just to make sure that we covered everything. So I'll make a first pass and we'll seek clarification and he can, he can see what I missed. One of the key things we heard on. Focusing first on replacement trees because this is really a project about tree removals. We had focused as staff on trying to find locations where they could support habitat. We recognize and will try to also look for places where they can support aesthetics. But what we heard you also say was to expand the consideration beyond trees. It could be also different kinds of native landscaping treatments that might be more compatible with. Where the pipeline is, if, if we're planting anywhere close to it ever again. Or if we're looking at some other kind of borders along. The scenic corridor area and what, what sized plants and what kind of foreground they could provide. Excuse me, provide. Also, wanted to note, it didn't really come up in your discussion tonight. One, a couple of challenges that we have. One is approximate property is in negotiations. The city is, the city council's directed staff to, with a purchase and sales agreement for eight eighty stone pine. And so that hasn't concluded on. We fully intend to purchase that property based on council's direction. And then at some point, there will be planning for that site or the city's courtyard. That's the whole point for it. And incorporating some landscaping there that is. Related to aesthetics and to habitat enhancement and conservation. Is a real legitimate component of how to approach development of that site. So it, it does, it sets you up for something that we don't always like to do, which is a bit of a punt. Because we don't know what all the best choices are yet. This is a significant amount of vegetation removal. And so it could be that an inlufi might be preferable to, to say that the. Impact of what we could do for really, really thoughtfully. Considering how to do replacements and replantings and, and dealing with that. So those are things that we've been thinking about. We were interested in how your conversation went tonight with the input from the applicant. And the biologists and we, we learned a lot certainly that. There's still some loose ends, so we'll, we'll do some more thinking. We also heard though, Chair Benjamin in particular from you that. Thinking this is beyond trees in terms of replacement, not just about an aesthetic component. Or a need to replace canopy area. But it was really looking at habitat. And of course, we talked about whether it's ash or not, but we also did acknowledge that. There's supportive habitat associated throughout this, this project area. So I'm not sure if you expressed everything you wanted to say about that. If you have more on that, we would love to know that. Staff feels very, very strongly that all the replacements should be in the city limits. We did not react well to the proposal. It wasn't that we don't like where they were proposing to do the replacements. We just know that locally. And because this is a gateway. You know, it's, it's such an important location for Half Moon Bay and, and visitors to Half Moon Bay. That it, it didn't make sense to us that this would be far afield and certainly not out of town. So we are, we are only looking in town and we are mostly looking along the Pillar Siders Creek corridor. So just sharing that with you. That's, I'll let Doug take over now because I think you've got a few more things. And I think we, you need to focus on sequoia also because I was, I'm just. I'm thinking about planning things as opposed to sequoia things.
I think. To a large extent, I need to sort of digest these comments, have a conversation with the applicant. Sort of fill out where they are on some of these questions. But I guess. One of the things we're coming back to here is just really what's the best thing to do in the eucalyptus area. And. I, I guess the takeaway is we need to look at some other scenarios. We're not ruling out herbicide use in the future, but we should look at some alternative methods. And also even going a little bit further into this with sort of discussing what kind of ground cover would. Get the most bang for the buck as far as habitat and that could. You know, withstand the onslaught of Cape Ivy and eucalyptus and everything else. And I think we need to. Have a conversation with the restoration ecologists, biologists. To really get a sense of what's feasible or not feasible there. I guess my question is, is there. Any real strong preference from the commission on where they want that path to lead to?
Are you looking for an answer now or did you want to continue?
If it's a short succinct answer that clarifies everything in my mind, that would be great. If not, I think I'll just cogitate on this stuff for a while.
That might be better.
Can I, can I do, just jump in though and point out that I, I think that if you look at the southwest area. Obviously it has much better habitat for frog and, and garter snake and its upland. And so, I mean, I think that it'd be very hard under an area that's been under growth, under, you know, eucalyptus for so long. To, you know, the, it'll take a while for the allelopathic, you know, chemicals to make their way out of the soil and everything and stuff. But, but, you know, looking for something more, maybe not as vegetated cover like Jimmy, sorry. Chair Benjamin was pointing out is that maybe it's more grasses or something like that. And those would maybe even be better habitat, upland habitat for garter snake. Because right now, under the eucalyptus in the northeast, it's not good habitat. I mean, it could serve as it. I'm just saying that it's not as good. And so maybe looking for something, I don't know, it's steep there. It might not be possible. That's not my area of expertise.
I'm with Sarah. I would, I, I'll, I'll rethought that, Sarah. I do believe that if I were going to. Trade off the leaf litter that a eucalyptus might provide and got some nice herbaceous covering plants. That would be a win if I were a garter snake. You know, that's a question I would ask Jennings.
Who do you want to speak? Sorry.
Come again?
Who are you looking for?
I wasn't. That's a question that I would add. I am.
Okay, it was just, it was quiet. It was quiet for so long. I was like, he's got to be waiting for somebody.
No, that was Dr. Jennings, as in Dr. Dr. Jennings, the expert on frogs, snakes, pond turtles. Anodumous fish, pretty much everything. So I don't know if that's helpful.
I, I think we can certainly explore that and it's, it's outside of my area of expertise. I don't know what the answer is going to be. We may come back to you with. Two or three scenarios at the next meeting and say. This one is low probability of success. This one's moderate. You know, sort of a plus or minus approach. I, I don't know.
May, maybe I should say one other thing. Sheila Larson, the US Fish and Wildlife biologist. Who covered Half Moon Bay back in the nineties. Once discussed a, a restoration project and she said, one of the most common mistakes that are made in these projects. Is that the, the government agencies who are considering it, or the applicant, or the public. Expectes it to come in too fast. You know, a good natural ecosystem evolves over time. And if you jam in plants next to each other and you, you know, flop up the soil and you put in pretty ones. You know, it's like the vegetation that's stamped before graduation. After, after graduation, it's gone. And I think we should be willing to delay our emotional gratification. You know, as Sarah said, that eucalyptus related compounds are going to take a while to decompose. And maybe what we need is the plan that gets us where we want to go over the long haul. And finding a way to, to do that while we're weighing the visual impacts in the short haul. And that area probably isn't going to be as visually appealing initially as what we might do in a site that hasn't been polluted. By eucalyptus for so long a period. But, you know, I think that the public, if they, if they understand that they're going to get a, a great solution. Is able to delay their emotional gratification. So with respect to sequoia, there were some, some comments about. You know, when the thing would operate. I think Sarah schooled me pretty well on precipitation. I would vouch for her experience. I do think that, that public safety power shutdowns, the nexus between that and the loss of communication. In a, an environment that's doing work in a pretty flammable area represents a potential risk. Maybe a little flushing out of the noise impacts.
I, I want a question about the noise. Actually, can I, can I ask you, Chair Benjamin, a question about the noise? I'm not understanding the, it sounded like the potentially sensitive receptors are really at the, they're at the southern. Southwest, near the southwest area where it's one day of, of, of tree removal?
So there are some, there are some sensitive receptors there and maybe that's a nit. That's fine. You know, I mean, I live next to the sand plant and dealt with steel piles being driven into the ground for, you know, weeks on end. So I'm, I understand that there's a scale of impacts. But the other sensitive receptors, you know, might be roosting raptors outside of the trees that are being removed. For example. We do have. Roosting, I meant nesting. My bad.
Well, we do have mitigation measure that addresses. Nesting birds does allow the biologists to establish buffers if they're observed there. We can take another look at the language in there and see if it needs to be refined a little bit.
Yeah, maybe I misread it. My perception was that if we found them, if we found nests in the trees, they'd wait till they were inactive. But I didn't see anything that says project activities within some distance of this nest of raptors is a bad thing. And maybe the noises aren't loud enough, but that's an issue. But I know Caltrans projects and other projects, some of which produce a lot more noise than this one will, have those kind of conditions. So my question isn't intended to prescribe what we should do. It's to ask, what should we do? And my sense is that let's at least look at it and say, you know, maybe Sarah's point is that this project can't possibly produce enough noise to disturb a raptor nest in an adjacent tree. So it's a non-issue. And that would work for me, but I didn't see the analysis that got me there. Sarah, did that make sense?
Yes, I, that clarifies it.
Okay, thanks. And we talked a little bit about some of the different policies that we want the project to demonstrate conformance to, the ones relating to listed species habitat, acknowledging that I think it's going to be fine for the right period. And, you know, the discussion about well ones, I thought was very helpful. And did you get the, I think you, Rick, do you feel like they captured the visual impacts that you were discussing?
Yes, I do.
Okay, fantastic. And then there were some other little things like a net, like where the roostings, there was a reference to three monarch roosting sites, but two are identified, you know, just little knit stuff like that, but I'm sure we'll clean up. And I think you, you know, in Doug's presentation, he mentioned some of the other utilities that are taking place, that are operating in the same area. And you know, there's a famous story about an area where there was a mine operating and they had these very complicated, but very detailed maps of how the mine should work for mine safety. And they ended up having an accident because they weren't recognizing that there was waterways in the adjacent area that were not on those maps. And so the question was intended to say, where can there be interactions between these utilities? You know, there's something that sounds really good for the gas line, going to be really bad for, I don't know, a water liner. It doesn't seem like it could be, but what do I know? That was why that question was asked. Oh, and although it didn't come up, I actually mentioned it in my text, and that is, do we have conditions that address the restoration of the staging areas? And if not, let's add them.
Well, first of all, one staging area is in the maintenance yard. It's been graded. There's nothing.
That shouldn't be made, right?
It's essentially pick up after yourself and take all your stuff with you when you leave. The second staging area is not as barren, but there is an existing road that goes into a clearing and again, they're not going to be doing grading or, this is not a construction project where you're parking bulldozers and stuff. So it's really more about cleaning up after you're done. You know, if driving trucks in there has left ruts in the road or something that could lead to erosion, that we'd make sure that gets cleaned up. But both of these sites were chosen because there's, there's just not much to damage there.
Yeah, if there's no impacts, then there's nothing to mitigate. As long as we have, we have a condition that lets you come in and say, you know what, that's an impact that we need to mitigate. And if you look at it and say no impacts, then there's nothing to do. So it could be a vacuous condition.
Well, it could certainly just be a condition of approval, not necessarily mitigation measure. It just says a final inspection by city staff, make sure everything's done as proposed and cleaned up and no unforeseen consequences, something like that.
Yeah, as, just as a matter of hygiene, I think of staging areas as things that, that's like the most frequently abused side effect of projects. And I would like to get in the habit of always having the boilerplate that those things get cleaned up. And if there's, like in this case, maybe they, like the one in the corp yard, doesn't need to get cleaned up. That's great. We can check the box. It's vacuous. But having one in place would be a good thing. I think that's everything I have. You know, anybody else want to weigh in, or are you ready to continue this to July the 14th, was it?
Yes.
I don't have anything.
Steve?
I'm ready to continue it. If Doug is content with what he needs.
Jill, are you okay with the continuation now? Could I have a motion from someone, please?
Well, I move, we continue this item as recommended by staff to the July 14th Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, is there a second? Commissioner Polgar, thank you. So it's moved and seconded to continue this to a date certain being July the 14th. I'd like to note that we agreed that we were going to reopen the public hearing so that we could get public commentary at that time.
Right.
With that in mind, all in favor, we signify by saying aye, raising your hand or whatever.
Aye.
Aye. Did we lose Rick?
Should we, I don't know, should we do a roll call vote? I'm not sure if we.
I've got three voices. I don't know if you want to roll call. We can do that. Sure, whatever.
I don't know. I just want to make sure.
Sure, why not?
Yeah, I think that sounds crude.
Go for it, Bridget.
Commissioner Polgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Reddick?
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin?
Yes, thank you. Rick, you were holding out on us. All right. So thank you for that careful discussion, colleagues. I appreciate it. So that brings us to the end of our public hearing items and time for the director's report. So how are we doing on time?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Chair Benjamin and Commissioners. We have a brief report tonight, but we do want you to make a note that we are going to now be shifting back to two meetings a month. We will continue in our Zoom format for as long as we need to, and we still need to. On July 14th, you already know what one of your items is because you just continued it. You will also have a coastal development permit is a, a matter of course relative to city council's consideration of parking fees for the Poplar Street parking lot. And we will have a study session on a proposed mixed use development on the corner of Mill and Parisima. It's a little two-story building and it's seeking a parking exception relative to the new code. So we want you to see that before we go too far into design review. July 28th, we are going to be working on your land use plan. We will have a study session on July 28th. We will get the materials out as far in advance as we can. You will get a complete document and we will talk to you more about that on July 14th as we prepare for that. August 11th, the first meeting in August, we would, we're trying to shift projects to the first meeting of the month. So private development proposals in particular would go August 11th, reserving the second meeting, August 25th for land use plan hearing. So a month after your study session, you would have an actual hearing on the plan, which would give folks quite a bit of time to look at the revisions that were, we're finishing up for you. And we've got a lot more going on, but we, we think two months of agenda forecasting is enough. If you are going to be out of town or figuring out how to escape this strange world that we're living in right now, let us know so that we can make sure we have forum. And we definitely appreciate that. Thank you. We're busy on the director's side. Last June 10th, we had an administrative approval for an accessory dwelling unit on Myrtle. Tomorrow, we have a director hearing via Zoom. We've got two hearing items. Both of them are for a new house with an accessory dwelling unit. And neither one is in the appeals jurisdiction. They all fully conform to the city's codes. And so that is why I'm taking them. One is at 563 Myrtle. The other is at 655 Potter. If you have any concerns or interests in either of the projects, do let me know as I'm continuing to adjust. And then there is also an administrative item for 547 Filbert. It is an accessory dwelling unit that does not require a hearing. We are also with staff working very proactively with businesses as they adjust to the really quite briskly evolving changes in, in what they're allowed to do. And they need, they need support in being able to do it. And one of the things we're working on right now, even though the restaurants are now going to be allowed to serve inside, they have to have more space. Thus, they can't have as many customers. And even before this, the pressure was to provide for more outside seating areas. We are working on a very quick, over the counters sidewalk permit that we would use kind of as a pilot case, making sure that we're conforming to ADA and doing a number of other things. Bridget's working on this. Many staff members are pitching in. We have to involve the engineers and we'll, we'll let you know what we end up with. And it will be a really good way for you over the next few months to give feedback about it. Half Moon Bay does not have a sidewalk cafe ordinance. We have narrow sidewalks. It's challenging to activate the street. You know how much we worked on that through zoning. It's important to work on that through things that happen outside the building too, with streetscape and, and uses. So just an opportunity is, is one way of looking at it. That is all I have for tonight. I, with Brittany and Winter, we are extremely busy working on the land use plan. If you need help from staff, I will probably refer you to other planners right now. So we'll just be thoughtful about that. And we'll try to bring you everything you need for, for those upcoming meetings. And thank you very much for tonight.
Okay, thank you. And I'm looking forward to the day that we can have our next meeting in person that is socially distant cafe in the street. Let's see. I think it's time for the planning commission communications. Does anybody have something that they'd like to communicate about?
I'd like to commend city staff for the wonderful vertical access project that was completed on Poplar Beach. Ahead of schedule, it is a great improvement on what was there before. And I just want to commend the city for moving us in the right direction here. So thank you. And one other thing is, I noticed some, what appear to be homemade signs indicating horses shouldn't go down the trail. It'd be great to get some signage there reflecting this is not an appropriate entry way for horses.
I can't wait to find out what the teenagers managed to do to it. That sounds wonderful. If it was agendized for a vote, I would, I bet it would be unanimous. Thank you, Rick. Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Reddick?
I was going to say the same thing as Commissioner Hernandez, having sort of seen the trials and tribulations of that Poplar ramp for the last 30 years. I commend everyone at City Hall who made that happen. Very solid and ahead of, ahead of schedule. It's rare in these times. So congratulations and thanks.
We will pass it on to everybody. Thank you.
You're making those of us in other neighborhoods jealous of your coastal access. That sounds very nice. I'll have to go down and have a look. Okay, anybody else? If not, could I please have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll move that we adjourn.
Could I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Our meeting is adjourned.